I call this meeting of the North Reading School Committee to session at 6:33 PM. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation, while in-person attendance for of members of the public will be permitted. In a quorum, the school committee will be in person. This meeting is concurrently being presented through a Google Meet and/or by a live broadcast by NORCAP to allow the public and any school committee members who cannot attend to participate. I'll state for the record that Mrs. Imbriano is not here tonight. So we have four members of the school committee and our superintendent and assistant superintendent, Connolly, here. So, welcome, everybody. We begin, as always, with any public input. So if anybody here has something they would like to address to the school committee that is not on the agenda tonight, because we always give you a chance if you want to comment on something that's on the agenda, talk at that time. Anybody have anything they'd like to speak about? Please raise your hand or unmute. Okay, hearing none. We move on to the student report. I believe we have a new student here, Cassandra Fitz. I see you on here, so if you'd like to unmute and give your report, we would love to hear it.
Okay, hi. So, I've just compiled, like, some things that have been going on in school lately. So, for academics, the end of Term One was Friday, November 5th, and so Term Two is starting up this week. Senior MCAS for the Abigail Adams Scholarship for State Schools is coming up, and as well as testing for the seal of biliteracy. For the arts, the Masters Performance of Newseas is coming up in December, and the North Reading Marching Band will be performing at the Veterans Day Ceremony on Thursday. For athletics, winter sports registration is opening soon. Teams that have recently ended their seasons are girls soccer, field hockey, and volleyball. And the cheer team won the Cape Ann League Championship. The football team is playing a home game against Norton on November 12th at 6 o'clock. Boys soccer will be playing an away game against Newburyport on November 10th at 5:30. Fall sports awards are tomorrow night, and banquet will be within the next few weeks. Currently, there's some fundraisers going on. I know a couple different grades are selling lanyards, I believe. The Instaract Club is starting their leaf raking project, in which they volunteer to help rake leaves for senior citizens. The DECA Club has a competition coming up on November 9th. And the Senior Civic Action Project is moving into Stage Three, and the timeline's been redesigned, so it'll be completed within the last two months of school, as opposed to, like, earlier, as it normally would be. That's all I have.
Oh, good job. Any questions from the committee or anybody else? Rich?
So, welcome, Cassandra. You're a sophomore this year, is that right?
Yes.
So, how has the experience been for you back in school? I know you got a little bit of back in school at the end of last year. How's it been this year for your first full year of actually being here?
It's been feeling a lot more like normal, the way it was in the past. There's still some things that are different. Obviously, we have to social distance, wear masks, et cetera. But it just, it's been a good experience so far, and it's getting us closer and closer to the way we used to be.
To normalcy, yeah. Thanks.
Interesting. Cassandra, I have a couple of quick questions for you. The first one might be negative, but I know, I know, you mentioned, "Boys soccer's playing again," so that means they won. Same with football. Did girls soccer lose their playoff game?
Yes.
Okay. And then, since you run to be on this, to be the school committee rep, I'm just curious, are there, is there any specific reason you wanted to run? Anything specific that you would like from your experience as your student rep? Be the student rep?
Um, I joined because I'm really interested in, like, political science and stuff like that, and I think this is a good experience to see that sort of stuff on a smaller scale, and just to be involved in the community also.
Great. And I would just say, just so that you understand, your student report is in the beginning. You are welcome to leave after that. You're welcome to stay as well. So if there are things on the agenda that you see, you know, in advance, if you want to look at the agenda, if there's ever anything that you want to be heard on, if you can let Dr. Daley know in advance, I'd be happy to, you know, try to put that higher on the agenda, because we would love to hear your, your voice on things. So if there is something that you want to be heard on, if you make sure to let us know, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, try to move things up if we can, just to, so that you can have your voice heard on things if, if you're interested. Okay. Well, welcome. If there's no other questions, we will move on. And again, as I said, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, or if you want to jump off, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, we have no continued business. So, there is no high school proposal for tonight?
That item is tabled. I do have a late add to the agenda. If we could just take a moment to recognize a professional status teacher?
Of course.
So, Ms. Tracy Nicholas is a nurse in our district, is an educator, and she is someone that we granted professional status to this year. As you know, I brought those folks forward. Just wanted to take a moment to thank them and to recognize them. And at your suggestion, we have added an additional little thank you prize. It's a small token of appreciation, but it's a very nice little pin that, Tracy, I left it for you on your desk. I didn't get it to you before you left, but it's just a, you know, to commemorate the commitment that you've made to us for the past three years, and that we have with you moving forward. And so, if my memory serves me, the first real interaction I had with Tracy was on our, you know, our world famous bus trip that we do with our new staff every year. And we were driving around, Tracy knows the story, and one of our new staff members wasn't feeling well on the bus. And Tracy instantly went into action, was providing services on the, the very first day on the job during the orientation. And I just, we had a great impression. And I just have to say, you know, I've, I've got to know our nurses a lot better in the past year and a half, and, you know, everything that, that they have done has been fantastic. I think Tracy does it all on a, on a large scale, right? Every time you have to trace classes at the high school, it's just so many more classes, so many more variables, and she's just put in so much time and effort, even above and beyond her regular workday in these past years. So, I wanted to take a moment to thank her, that we're very, very happy to have her with us, and she's added so much to our district, and we're very excited to have this relationship of professional status moving forward. So, thank you, Tracy.
Excellent. And what, what school are you at, Tracy?
I'm at North Reading High School.
At the high school. Well, welcome. Congratulations on being here for three years, and I can't imagine a tougher job for the nurses, being a nurse in the last couple of years. So, thank you so much for all the work you've been doing, and, I don't know, I mean, we, you missed a very awkward one when we didn't have anything to give you, so at least we have a pin now, but we very much appreciate the, you know, the commitment that you're giving to us, and hopefully, you know, you'll be here for many years to come.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Daley.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And Tracy will now give the COVID-19 update. No, I'm just...
Well, there's a transition. COVID-19 update.
Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can sign off if you don't want to listen to the COVID-19 update. You've probably talked about COVID enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Daley?
Great. So, thank you so much. I just...
Actually, what was, I'm just curious, was, was there a specific club that's going to be coming up, and what club was that, do you know?
There is a, there is a proposal for a culinary club. So typically, the clubs are proposed in the spring of each year, and the principal does have the discretion to propose a club mid-year, and I think due to all the circumstances last spring, Mr. LaPrette considered that. There were just some steps that needed to be taken to identify the advisor, but this did come from students. So it's a, we do have a proposal. It looks, it looks great, and it's going to be on the agenda for next month. There was just some, some hangups with getting everything together for tonight.
Thank you. I'm just a curious guy.
Yeah. Great. So, the, you know, the most, the major updates I want to share, obviously, I think this is our first meeting since the mask mandate has been extended through January 15th, and I just want to be clear on a couple of things that I've been receiving a lot of emails about in relation to the, the mask mandate, also with vaccinations and "vax," quote-unquote "vax" mandates. As I've said many times here, there is no indication that there's any kind of mandate around a vaccine. The only information that I've ever heard from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is that if there were to be a mandate, it would be coming from the Department of Public Health, not from Department of Education. So that's, that's the only information that I've really heard about that. We are continuing to get additional information from our staff to consider the 80% thresholds. We have all of our schools' staff is currently above 80%. So this was not, we did not mandate that everyone showed us their cards or not. We, it was all voluntary. So there may be some room here for people that just chose not to share, that may be vaccinated, and there may be some folks who just, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't bring in their cards. So the, the numbers could be a little bit higher, but everyone's above 80%. Bachelor's schools, 91%. Hooded, 87.5. Little is at 98%. Middle school, 81%. High school, 84.96, so 85. District is at 92%.
And to be clear, that's staff?
That's staff. Those are, that's staff.
Overall staff.
Yep. And so we're still in the process of looking at, at student numbers, but, but we know that we would not be at that 80% number for everyone, because the middle school and high school are combined. So the, at the moment, those are the, you know, the, we are offering vaccination opportunities. As you're aware, the, the youngest students now have the opportunity, the clinics that we've been offering, there are many people who wanted to have their children vaccinated right away, and they were able to get slots pre-registered. So when the vaccination was approved, we were able to get in. So there was a good number of people who, who pre-registered for those, and we've shared those out. But again, that's just an option, and it's something that's available for those that want to participate. The vaccination, I'm sorry, the, the mask mandate was extended. The reasoning that was cited for that was mostly around a few different things. It was the, the ability to have the, the two holidays, the holiday seasons, basically, with travel and gatherings included, and also to give time for the students who had not yet been vaccinated to be vaccinated. So I, I've been sharing with people that have written that they're, they're hoping that this will end soon. My hope is that this last extension, logically, I could see this being, you know, maybe the last, the last time that they need to extend this. I'm not sure what they will do. Obviously, they'll look at the data at that time and see what's, what's happening, but I do understand that at this point, not everyone has had the opportunity to be vaccinated, if they wanted to be vaccinated, and this would extend that opportunity now, and have that window from the early November approval through the January 15th. So, at that time, the Department of Ed keeps speaking of additional off-ramps that are not connected to vaccination, and so my hope would be that they could return possibly at that time to, you know, a similar recommendation to what we had in the summer, which was, you know, leading back to choice. So again, more to come on that. There's not any more information at this time, but they did extend it for a couple of months there. And I have heard, as I mentioned, from several people about both vaccinations and, and mask wearing, and so that's the consistent answer I've been giving to everyone, and I just wanted to share that here. We have extended our, our testing program support. So we've had Beth Steele, who has been our nurse that's been working on this program, is now officially the program coordinator. We've been able to hire a few other folks. I put out a survey to gather information from parents, and we had, from the community, parents and community. We had several, about 40 people put in that they were interested in helping us out, which was great. I passed those names on. We've hired two individuals. There are some other individuals that we're able to bring on, so we're going to be able to expand that program, which can make it more efficient, get the staff and students in and out faster, and we're able to expand from middle school, high school, to two days a week to get even more people participating. You know, the, the time that they were able, the students especially, was during their lunch and power block, and we found that some students were not quite, you know, we were suspecting that possibly that time wasn't ideal, because, you know, that's the only time they might have with their friends, and it's a short time anyway. So we've extended it to have a little bit of time before school, and also do it on two different days, so that we could try to, to get more people that are interested to participate. So we still continue to have those options available, along with symptomatic testing, test and stay, and all of the staff that we're able to get in that is working under this third-party company takes some of the burden off our nurses, who are working so hard with their regular positions, to have to do all this additional testing is a lot. And so to have this additional support has been very, very well received by, by everyone. And the fact that some of our own people are able to now, you know, work under this heading of this other company and to train, the fact that they're people that we know and trust, that we've worked with already and been successful with, is very exciting. So we're, we're looking forward to that continuing to be another support that we have in the midst. So those are the two major updates. I don't know if there's any questions, or Michael, if you had anything to add about COVID updates at this time, or...
No, I think that, I think you kind of covered everything. I think operationally, I think things are sort of flowing in terms of, you know, the food service program. I think the numbers are doing really well, as I'll talk a little bit about that later this evening. Participation has been, has been good with the, with the free meals, breakfast and lunch. The busing program is, is, is rolling well. We did start last week, we did start the late busing program, as was one of the initiatives we felt we could do with the combined start and end times, and that's, we did, we did start that last week, and I think that went fairly well. So we're hoping to continue to monitor that and maybe expand that and open that up to more, more students as the, you know, school year progresses. And, you know, overall, I think, you know, operationally, things are flowing pretty well. So, I'll, I'll have a COVID funding update with the budget update later as well.
Questions from the committee? I'll have a few comments and questions quick. The, one thing I just want to state, because there's been a couple of parents or other community members that have emailed in, just to clarify for the record again, I mean, right now, there's that, the mandate for masks overall, but even if that were not there, the underlying message was 80% vaccination status, or, yeah, have 80% vaccinated, and none of our buildings are at 80%. Just want to make sure that that's, you know, on the record there. In terms of numbers, though, if I, if I'm correct, in all of October, there are only five positive for students and five for staff? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's significantly lower than we were seeing last year, right?
It is. Well, at that time last year, but definitely even lower than in September, right?
Yeah.
So it was just a definite drop. And so far, even better this month, so.
Yeah. And with the, with the late bus, Michael, I mean, how many, how many students signed up for the late bus? I'm just curious.
So, there was about 65 students that were, are participating in the, the extra help after school, the Homer Club, that were interested in the late bus. I would say there hasn't been that many that have, that rode last week. So out of that, 65 was maybe 10, 15% actually then got on the bus, or others got picked up and so forth. So we're, you know, we're hoping that, you know, changes and is, the ridership goes up a little bit, but if that's not the case, we'll be able to open it up to, to more families that may be interested.
And I know, I know my son is doing the, the drama club, and I know that, that stays later than the late bus was, and so...
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do, do most things end by to be able to do the 4:00 bus?
That's the thing. I've talked to Dr. O'Connell about that as well, and so we're going to see whether we need to adjust the bus or adjust the clubs, or, you know, certainly, yeah, this is something that we've wanted to do for years, and just the ability to have students who couldn't participate because of transportation, being able to participate is huge. So certainly, we'll try to adjust those times on either end if we can, so.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would just add to that, that my, my old thought about a late bus always has been, I don't know what the numbers are going to be, but it's not so much about the quantity as about the quality. So if you are providing opportunities for a dozen kids to participate that weren't able to otherwise, that, to me, is a victory, even if it doesn't feel like a lot of ridership.
Yeah. That's great. I want to thank Mr. Connolly for working so hard on that to make that a reality, because it's been something that, back when I was an assistant principal, I used to beg for. So it's like, it's, it's great that we have that. Just to bring you up to speed on the numbers, so the, the peak that we had, you know, January, just for student numbers, 44 in December, 40 in January, 28 in February, 25 March, 34 April, then it started dropping off. It was back to 22 in September, down to 5 in October, and 0 so far in November, which is great. So certainly trending in the right direction, which we're very happy about.
Right. Yeah. And I, I love the idea of the late bus, because, now, I was thinking of clubs, but I forgot about even, like, extra help after school, and it's not even just the clubs, it's even kids that need help after school, so.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, capital improvement plan. I know we talked about this before, and I see there's some adjustments to do it, so, Mr. Connolly, if you want to walk us through?
Sure. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Is this viewing?
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, in the packet this evening, there was a memo, so I think we kind of provided a detailed presentation at the last meeting in terms of our large capital projects over a three and five-year timeframe. There was a lot of good discussion and feedback I felt like the administration received, and Dr. Daley and the administrative team went back, and we tried to, at the next administrative team meeting, you know, talked a lot about the feedback, and I think a lot of it made sense in terms of looking at the numbers and how we can maybe accelerate some of the, the requests that we had originally proposed at the, at the October 18th meeting, as well as looking at some additional, you know, funding that may be there through COVID and different things that the town will be, also have available this year, that they'll be reviewing, and I'm assuming that will also become part of this process, as well as just looking at some of the challenges that we're now facing with transportation, and it's getting better, but there's still a level of uncertainty. We kind of re-looked at the schedule. I wouldn't say we added a lot of projects to this, but we more or less looked at the calendar and the schedule over the three or five years, and just made some adjustments, which you'll see reflected here on, on the pages. So I'm going to kind of move through on, onto the recommended priority list. So, the one change I'll just highlight is the priority number one. This was originally a $67,500 request that we were initially asking to do over two years as a phase-in approach. This is the elementary smart boards replacement, interactive devices replacement. So we certainly heard the, the fact that, you know, we were only asking, originally asking for about $265,000 in year one and year two, because of some other large facility capital projects, was still a very high request. We felt like we could maybe accelerate this replacement. I think, I think there actually some, could be some economies of scale. At doing this all together, I talked to Dr. Downs, who would manage this purchase, and we, we managed it this year. And this would essentially accelerate this by a year, and it would get the, all the boards potentially replaced by the start of September of 2022, or fiscal '23, as opposed to fiscal '24, which would, which is a positive thing as well. So, and I think it's, there is some efficiency gain, some economies of scale gain, to just kind of do all this at once over one summer, as opposed to trying to spread it out over two. So that, that's, and that was a, a discussion point at the last meeting, and we kind of heard that, and are now recommending that change. Items number two and three are the same. Previously, I think these are important projects from a ventilation standpoint, from a quality of service standpoint, from an energy efficiency standpoint. I think we should, these should be high up on the priority list, and we need to move forward with these requests. And items number four and five, I'll just say, they're not necessarily new requests, but we've kind of accelerated their importance and moved them up. This item number four had, this has really been on the list for quite a number of years it's been deferred, but there's certainly a need to start looking at these electronic systems at the elementary schools. So that includes the, the clock system, the intercom system. They're old. When there are issues, some of the equipment is so old, it's hard to even find a company that is able to service them and troubleshoot it. You know, some of these, it's hard to find replacement parts for some of these issues. So it's, when something goes down, a wiring issue, a paging issue, it's, it's just hard to, to find it. It takes, it takes a while. So we'd like to focus first on that, that request. I think that's inherently a principle, that's the most urgent need, is to synchronize the clock system, bring in a wireless clock system that would be fully synchronized, easy to manage. When we have a situation like Sunday, and there's a turn back the clock situation, you know, we're not running to 62 different clocks in a building and manually adjusting those, because some of the clocks are broken, and we're, we've moved to a battery, battery clock system to get those functioning. So there's not, we're not in a situation where there's all the clocks in the classrooms read a different time. So I think we've come to try to redress this. We've gotten proposals, and this would address that, and it would also address sort of a centralized paging system by adding sort of a, a module in the, in the principal's office, just to make that whole system easier. So it, it's about $15,000 per school. So that would be the top priority. That was originally like a couple of years out, and we just kind of kept deferring it. And then the fifth one that we've added, this was originally in the second year, but certainly listening to some of the challenges with special education transportation, we feel like we could accelerate the request of replacing the 2011 van. And by doing this next year, if funded, it actually would provide us the option of actually incorporating a fourth van into our fleet. So we think the 2011 van could potentially last another year or two as a reliable spare. So if we didn't replace the 2011 van at that time, if funded, and we could, we could take the new van and put it into the operation and start doing some out-of-district transportation, which could lead to some savings and just be more of a reliable service, because right now, there's just, this, it's been a challenging few months. It is getting better, but we feel like we had to do some of it anyway this year for the first time. So we've already kind of had to adjust and, and did do some out-of-districts, so we felt like if we could get a reliable driver and some spares and up, we could do some out-of-district transportation and save, save some money as well. And, you know, we, we're also trying to balance the, you know, how big of a fleet can we want to manage before we have to add personnel and, and many dispatch office, but we feel like we could certainly manage four, four vans and four drivers and potentially save and do some of the out-of-district. So this option provides us to that, and I think, in, speaking to the CIPC, you know, they love looking at payback periods. I think this would be a very quick payback period, probably two years, as, this could be a, have a payback period. So, so we've accelerated that, that program, that, that option. And then fiscal, so the total request is $425,000, so it's still not a huge request, but it's more than the 265 that we originally had proposed. And then that makes, year two, that makes really the chief focus there, being the hood school roof restoration, which is, we know, is a high-ticket item. And then it would be Phase Two of the electronic systems, so that would access, address the access control system into the building, and it would address some, some of the intrusion alarm systems that just need, need repair in some areas for similar type issues, just old wiring and just an old, an old system that's difficult to troubleshoot. And we have gotten proposals for that as well. So those would be the focus in fiscal '24. Should everything get funded? Now, if anything doesn't get funded, we'd have to redo this next year and make some changes. But then fiscal '25, which would be year three, again, we submit three years to the CIPC. It essentially stayed the same that you saw last week. The only change, I think, is, is that we accelerated, I think the, the electronic system, Phase One was in this year, so we've accelerated that and did it in year, year one and year two. And the only other change is we, right after the meeting, or it was really the evening of the meeting, we were getting updated quotes for the Wi-Fi. So I think I had $95,000 there, and it just, we need a little bit more funding to do that, so it's about, I changed that to $130,000. Everything else stayed the same from last meeting. So, again, in pri, in the priority list, you know, they ask us to submit it, to prioritize and submit, so this was the administration's effort to look at, you know, what is the most important, always what's going to have the biggest educational impact on students. Technology is always a priority, as well as just safety and just certainly, you know, in this era of ventilation and improvements in HVAC systems and so forth is important. And then the safety with electronic systems is, is, is always a focus. So it's, you know, student educational impact and student safety and staff safety and community safety is, is what's looked at as, when we, when we try to prioritize these, these items. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions. So again, we, the timeline, these would be, our due on Friday. So we are looking for kind of an endorsement, approval, this So we are looking for kind of an endorsement approval this evening, so I can submit the capital sheets and programs to the CIPC by the deadline.
Well, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. It seems like when we hire staff, we got to ask about if they can drive a bus for us.
Yeah, right.
And for us, because it'd be nice to have a few staff members. I have no questions or comments or I think it's, I like all the changes, I think they all make sense. Other comments, questions, committee?
I had a question. Looking ahead to next year, or looking ahead to the hood roof project. If, you, in your notes, it mentions that it, the roof is still, is an excellent candidate for restoration that would extend its life for 20 years, which is great. Is there danger, is there, is that like a fine line where we're in danger, if it gets pushed back? Obviously, I'm still, we're still looking at next year anyway, but if it gets pushed back too much that we get past that point where we, we can't?
Yeah, I think.
Are we close to that or is it still, do we have some wiggle room there a couple of years?
It's definitely, I would say it's, the conditions deteriorated over the last couple of years in particular, we, we've had to, you know, address certain areas of the roof, we did do an infrared scan. Through our insurance company, we worked with, through Maya and we, we had a company come out and perform a program and we did identify some areas that you certainly need attention and we've tried to do that. So we, we certainly are spending more money each year on repairs and leaks, so I think the danger is it's going to be more, more costly and more money. And right now, based on the assessment, that's only a couple of years old, they felt like it was, was a candidate, I think the more time, we're probably not in, if it goes outside two or three years, we're probably closer to that and where it needs a full, full replacement, but you know, I think, I think where, you know, this is sort of the right window of the next couple of years, we need to address it, we've deferred it a couple of times. Because it's in that 20, you know, over 20, 25 years life, you know, we could consider, what we did with the little school roof, that's certainly going to add overhead costs to it. But it's going to also bring a lot more expertise into the project, a lot more checks and balances, a lot more designers and project managers looking at it and trying to define the right solution. Which isn't a bad thing and then it should bring about 48 to 50% reimbursement, we'll probably get back to the same number with the overhead, I think we kind of learned that with, with the little school project, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Chris, Diana? Okay. If somebody wants to read the page and make a motion for us?
Sure. I move that the school committee vote to approve the large capital improvement project in the priority present, priority order presented by the administration to the capital improvement planning committee for fiscal year 23, 24, and 25.
I second.
Okay, since we're all here. All in favor? I, we're all in person, aye. Opposed? So it passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Connolly?
Thank you very much.
Making record time here. Now that I'm back, I took the reins from Mr. McGowan, we're moving quick.
I just want to say I did, I did not get us back in time for the first pitch of that game, but I did get us back in time for the only important moment, which was the two grand slam. I just wanted to review that.
That's true.
Okay, we don't have, this is Embryano, so someone's going to have to step up tonight and do the minutes motion for October 18th open session. Looking at Diana and Chris here.
I'm going, I'm getting to it.
I just want to, I'm looking for the phrasing of it so I can phrase it correctly.
I move that we. To approve the minutes for the open session on October 18th, 2021.
I second.
Okay, and for comment, any, anybody notice any changes? I actually did read them because I knew Janine wasn't going to be here. I saw nothing, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four to zero. Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Yes. So in your packet this evening was the budget update, which reflects financial activity through the end of October. And the budget continues to be in solid standing, like I said, we had a very solid close of fiscal year 21, that's certainly because of a lot of COVID funding and grant funding and additional federal sources and we were able to really set ourselves up in good standing to deal with sort of the unexpected in fiscal 22. And, you know, things have been progressing well, we certainly were able to, to exceed what we had budgeted and forecasted for our special education prepayment amounts. So even though we've had some additional costs come up, which isn't unusual in the area of special education for some out of district replacements and costs in transportation in some areas. As well as in just some repairs that we've needed in certain areas for boilers and HVAC equipment, nothing super out of the ordinary, but we've, we've had, had some needs that have come up in the first quarter in a month of the fiscal year. We've been able to address those without, without major concern and we're, we're in good financial standing. The special revenue accounts are, are healthy and solvent and in good standing and there's been no surprises with, with the cash flow of revenue coming in in terms of what we've anticipated. And as I alluded to earlier, the food service program has been doing very well, there's been strong participation, over 50% on a daily basis, so with the USDA, you know, federal subsidy that we've been receiving with the free mails. It's been, we really have a, a good amount of revenue flowing into the program, which is, which is excellent. So that, that account is in, is in solid financial standing. And, you know, I think really at this point in the year, we've just got to certainly monitor the heating season and the utility costs and certainly, certainly areas that need to be addressed, but I think we're in, we're in good financial standing, there's really no major surprises from the last update at this point. But what I did want to talk a little bit about, I think I said, you know, really this might be a good time to just take a quick look at where things stand with our federal, additional COVID-19 federal funding sources, so on the last page of the report, beyond the expense and salaries, I did, similar to what we did last year, I did kind of just update, these are some additional grants that we've received through the, really federal grants that are COVID related that are all helping us do certain things this year. You know, to address the, the learning loss and, you know, the social and emotional needs and so forth and the need to, to really address, you know, learning in certain areas, so. Dr. Daley worked really well and we had a summer acceleration academy grant this year. And this, this was really a summer grant, so it's, the deadlines expired and it's been fully spent, but this was an additional allotment that was really helpful this past summer. The S R two and the S R three funding, so just as a reminder, this was all spoken about during the budgetary process, we knew this funding was available to us, we knew, we know we have the next three fiscal years to spend it. So we want to spend S R two first before you spend S R three, so even though we had to kind of do the grant applications and then indicate where we want to spend it, we do have a few years to spend it. So right now, we're, we're working with S R two and that as a reminder is funding the school adjustment counselors, the, some digital learning technicians, some intervention tutors. And then we do have, we know of S R three and we're going to look to continue to fund these positions that were added, which is mainly the, the, actually the school nurse as well, the, the digital learning technicians, the intervention tutors and the adjustment counselors, so the plan was to spend about 215 or so thousand over the next three years and that's so to sort of avoid that funding cliff and continue to reassess each year as we get closer to the end of this, this funding, but we know we have through fiscal 24. And then these two additional sources were part of the American Rescue Plan, you know, federal funding source, they're, they're sort of, we receive a good amount of special education funding through the IDA grant as well as through the early childhood grant, so these are like two additional funding sources through federal funding sources through sort of COVID-19 monies that are available. And Cynthia Conant, Director of Student Services is working at, you know, spending these funds, but it's essentially for additional allotments for kind of that medical therapeutic contractual services for eligible students, special education students in need. And then a grant to purchase some assistive technology for again eligible special education students that are in need. So similarly as how we spend these funds for IDA and 262, which is two additional allotments that allows us to have that additional flexibility for us to do more and and it's needed too, because there's a lot more services and a lot more proprietary services that are coming up every day and that are needed that are being identified, so. Certainly helpful, but as you can see, we're about $856,000 of additional grants that we're receiving. Most, some of which need to be spent this year, but the biggest thing is we have the S R three, which we have two more years to, to expend. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, questions? Chris, no?
No, good.
Rich?
Nope.
Diana?
I'm good.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly, and I would just point out that in the budget process, we were able, you know, with the work with the select board, we were able to extend a lot of those funds and not have to use them this year, so it is nice that not only do we have the ability to spend them for a couple of years, in our planning process last year, that's exactly what we planned to do is spread them out over three years, which will hopefully allow us to keep some of these positions a little bit longer, so.
Just to add, there were a couple of grants that we put in for in the last week or so too, there's one for, we're exploring one to look at MTSS for our district, there's another one about financial literacy for all students, it's K to 12. For some explicit lessons about financial literacy, which is a part of the history frameworks and just how to implement that. And there's another grant about reimbursement for some of these summer programs, we may be able to access some, some additional reimbursements for either local funds or even some of the grant funding that came from some of the federal funds if it, if appropriate, so. All of those grants are sort of, sorry?
No, sorry, I did put in for a food service grant as well.
Food service.
Similar to what we got last year, it's kind of an equipment grant, so, but yeah, there's.
So there seems to, there's just a lot of grants that come out, you got to kind of turn it around very quickly, so, you know, Mr. Connolly, Mr. Clean, Ms. Conant, Dr. Downs is also putting in another grant around digital literacy, so there's just a lot of funding opportunities. A lot of these are certainly, you know, rank ordered by districts' needs, accountability status, you know, where, where we are very low ranking as far as consideration, however, we're still taking the time to put them in and for the chance that we get some funding back and, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we will get some additional support, so. Just wanted to add that as well.
And, and I appreciate the work from the administration in doing that, I mean, I don't, it doesn't go unnoted that, you know, there, there are a lot of funds out there. And I think some districts don't take the time to do it and I know that it is a lot of time on top of your other jobs, so I appreciate Mr. Connolly, Dr. Daley, the other administrators who do take the time to apply for them because as we know, every, every dollar that we are allocated is used for something. And so, you know, I think the community should understand that we don't turn back money, we, we use the money that we're allocated for whatever we can, so. It's great that we can, you know, we're limited in what we can get every year, the town can only increase two and a half percent every year. We have a limited resource, so it's great that we can extend that when we can, so thank you guys.
Have we ever talked about a grant writer position?
Select board wants one.
Yeah, so we've talked about it.
That's where I've heard.
Yeah. It's, it's something we've thought about for different things in town and it is, it is coming up at the, at the town side, so there certainly could be some supports, we do have some. We have looked at that through a cost share measure with SEEM Collaborative as well. And so we do have someone there that helps us with Title III and with some other grants as well, but yeah, these are, these are the competitive, these are the DESI grants that, you know, you know, it's worth putting in for, but again, it's, it's like when you look at, that's what you find with a lot of the grants, we don't, we don't qualify for. Which is kind of challenging, so when we've gone down that road of saying, is it worth in-house to bring someone in? We haven't, we haven't explored that fully.
Yeah, it doesn't, it, it, full-time doesn't seem like it's, yeah, I can, I can see that, but maybe if the town is exploring that too, it might be some sharing thing there.
Yeah, that's been a part of our conversation.
I mean, we're, we're fortunate in this town in that we do have a lot of support from the community and, you know, I, everybody understands we have a high tax base, but, you know, it does support our schools quite a bit. We don't have as much business as some of the other towns around here as we all know, which makes it challenging and, you know, we have a, you know, as you said, we, our, our district performs pretty well, which means we are ineligible for some other grants, so. If we do the best we can and a lot falls on the community, but we very much appreciate the community support, so. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Staffing update?
None at this time.
Bids and donations, none at this time?
None at this time.
Subcommittee update, finance planning team, Mr. McGowan, you want to update?
Finance planning team met on the 29th and we started looking ahead to the revenue plan and I, I think we spent a lot of time talking about looking at, changing the way we're looking at budget, looking, doing a, what, a five, three or five year look back and then projecting forward a little bit rather than just dealing it as, as much year to year.
And I, I mean, I would, I would jump in, sorry to interrupt here, but I think, I think one of the challenges, what we always see is we want to be conservative in our estimates for revenue. But what that leads to is a large amount of free cash at the end of the year. Because everything is not actually budgeted, but the only way we're able to support our budget every year is by using the free cash from the year before. And so I think the goal this year is to maybe not budget it so that so much money flows through to free cash. To try to budget a higher revenue amount, a more realistic revenue amount, and part of that is looking back three to five years to figure out what the actual revenues were in the past. To budget for the future and then maybe over a year or two, adjust it so that we're not, we're not using so much free cash each year and we have a more accurate number. Because the idea would be if there's really num, if there's really money at the end that's flowing through, rather than, you know, using last year's free cash to pay for this year, I think a lot of it would be, let's budget it more accurately. So I think that was what we, we talked a little bit about.
And none of this is about cutting budgets or changing budgets, just being more accurate and, and putting it right in the front, the burner.
Well, and, and there's things that I don't completely understand with about like, you know, how our town's bond rating is, is, is figured out, is determined and you know, some of these accounting practices, if you aren't using your free cash, it looks better to bond, for bond rating and so again, I think it was a, a good discussion, I think there's a lot more to come, but I don't think anything, none of this is, as Rich said, none of this is to adjust what's happening, we're not trying to use free cash for things that we weren't, you know, planning on doing before, we're not trying to cut things, it's really just trying to make sure we're doing it in the proper accounting way. The only other thing that I remember was we talked a little bit also about, like, like we were just talking about with the grant, there is a lot of state money out there. And our local reps, you know, Senator Tar and Representative Jones are, you know, they've, they've been very good about advocating for our town. And so I think the finance planning team is talking and I know Mr. Connolly and Dr. Daley and Mr. Gilberto and Liz.
Liz.
With Liz, forget our last name. Are, are talking about trying to get together the list of needs that we have in town, both on the municipal side and the school side. Just to see if there is money that comes up, if there's some funding that, you know, any grants that we could get, any projects that we could get, because there's a lot of federal and state grants and money that might be out there. So just like we were just looking at the capital improvement project, some of those projects are going to be on, you know, kind of our wish list. We just want to make sure we have an open dialogue with our, with our representatives so that if there, you know, are, if there are some funding sources that become available, that they are very aligned with what our needs are. And so, and, and on that, I know that Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly were working to put some of the, some of the things from our capital improvement, but also potentially some of our, our NRPS 2025 request onto that list, have we been able to do that yet or we're working, is that a work on progress?
We're still working on that, yeah.
Okay. But. Yeah, that, that kind of came up and just trying to make sure that we're all aligned with the needs that we have and, you know, working with our state representatives to advocate for us if we can. Fine arts subcommittee?
Uh, yeah, Rich and I both kind of attended that one. We were both unfortunately having to do it from virtually, but it was a good meeting, it was, it was kind of like a getting back into the, into the, the school year group meeting and it was an interesting time of year for them, they as I hope some of you guys were able to attend, the, the haunted playground had just concluded a couple of days before. So that was kind of a, one big arts-based event that they had just finished and, and the rest of the meeting was spent really discussing upcoming events, none of which are immediately, I, the, the, I guess the, the plays coming up.
Newsies is coming up in December, yeah.
Three weeks, four weeks, yeah. And that's the, the most proximate thing, everything else a little bit. And that's the, the most proximate thing, everything else a little bit further out. So it was really just discussing long-term, long-term events coming up.
Little conversation about the holiday concerts too, and what the plans are for those, so.
Yep.
Are they going to be more back to what they were before, or?
I think we're getting close to it, right? Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we'll have, it'll be, you know, masks for the audience, but there will be an audience in person, and they, we're hoping for the performers to be able to unmask as needed if they're spaced out and far enough away. So I think we're going to have something that's going to resemble, you know, a typical year. I think the schools, the individual schools are making decisions around concerts, and that's based on venue, based on a lot of different pieces. But there will be some winter concerts this year in, in various states. So we, we talked it all out, we, we had some decisions, and each school made the best decision for their school.
I, I will, I will jump in on the fine arts on, on a couple of quick things. Number one, I thought the Haunted Playground was excellent. It did bring my kids. I made a large donation to the games, and still, still think if I get two of those three bottles, I should have gotten the prize. Had to be two in a row to get the prize, but it is what it is. But on the, on the concerts, or just thinking about concerts, I know last year we didn't have band in the elementary schools, and I know that at least at the little school, and I'm curious if this happened at the hood and the batch, but I know that Mr. Tatro announced at the little school, he has a higher present, a higher participation rate in the band than he's ever had in, like, nineteen years of teaching there. Seventy percent of the fourth and fifth graders are, are playing an instrument in the band this year. And I think a lot of that probably is, I would suspect that fourth grade usually has a high participation, and then it, doing those down a little bit. But I thought that was excellent to see, seventy percent. Do we know at the, at the hood and the batch if they saw high participation rates as well this year? You know?
I think it's been high. I know that they were having some issues with their instruments as well, and some backwarded instruments and things, so we've, we've made some adjustments there. And there were, there was some band participation at, at the schools last year towards the end. They did some concerts in the spring. It was a little, it was just, like everything else, just very different.
But I don't know if the fourth grader started last year. I don't think, at the little school, they didn't start the fourth graders, they didn't have an option to start. Maybe the up.
The fifth grader.
The fifth graders were doing it, but they weren't starting with the new ones.
Yeah.
At least at the little school, this is the first year, because my son's in fifth grade.
Gotcha.
It's the first year that he was offered it. And I know that, again, if it is, I know Mr. Tatro's doing an awful lot, because with, with that many kids, there's a lot of extra times, and it's, it's a lot of work, but I, I think it's a great program, and it's great to hear that so many students are trying, trying an instrument.
It is. It's very exciting. And so, you know, getting around to see the kids practicing, and, and it's really, it's really exciting. And they're able to do it, you know, they still have, you know, mask, and they're doing things, but they're spread out, using different spaces. I saw them in the cafeteria at the bachelor school, Mr. Muse, and, you know, the clarinet was what I got to observe the other day, and it's great. They're really, it's just good to see that in, and they're, they're very thankful to not be outside chasing their music as it's blowing down the hill, like they were last year, so. So far, so good with that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how smart it was that my, my son, who's the shortest in the class, decided to do the trombone, because he can't reach half the positions, but he will eventually be able to hit all the positions. Subcommittee, any other Subcommittee updates? Schedule's coming up, finance planning teams, December third at eight fifteen a.m. Fine Arts is December eighth at three fifteen. Athletics is at December fifteenth at twelve p.m. Any administrative report, Dr. Daly?
I just, I just want to share a couple of items. One thing that has been really great for our culture, Cynthia Conant, Director of Student Services, has framed this month as a gratitude month, and it's just something that I, I think is really neat, is the staff are sort of emailing each other, writing notes to each other, just taking time to thank one another and to recognize things. And it, it's amazing, I, I have received a couple, and it does, it, it makes your day, it really does, just for people to take time out of their day to do something like that. I just thought that was just a great way to frame the month. One thing I had included in my opening day this year was just about the research behind gratitude and how, you know, taking the time to recognize what's positive in your life just can change your outlook on the day, on the year, and frame everything that way. And so it's, it's really great to, to see that as well. So I just wanted to share that with you.
All right, only comment I'll add is, you talked about Mrs. Conant from Subcommittee. I, I attended the CPAC, the, they had a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and Mrs. Conant presented. She brought, it was an introduction to all the staff in student services. So it was just an open meeting where, you know, they sort of talked about, you know, the general ways that it work, like who the liaison is and how that system works, and introduced everybody that's on her team, and, you know, answered questions at the end. And I, I thought it was a nice way to sort of bridge that gap to the parents that were there, and I, I thought it went really well. So appreciate her having, and all, everybody on the staff taking the time to come to that meeting, and I thought that went really well.
She's going to give us an update a little bit on student services next month as well, or next meeting as well.
Excellent. Any correspondence to talk about?
I just wanted to share, I forgot to bring it down with me, but the Haunted Playground, all the students who worked with us and presented to us gave us a really great, they gave me and the school committee just a great thank you for the, for the support of the program this year. I thought it was just really well. And it's, it's sort of that last step, sort of in their whole process of who do I need to speak to, who do I need to present to, who do I, you know, and then having the event, it's successful, and then a thank you. It's just really great civic action that, that, that group took, so I wanted to share that with you. We're really, I was not able to attend. My children were very disappointed. We had a, a death in the family and had to attend a, an event outside of state, so I had the kids, couldn't bring them, but I'm glad to hear you folks were able to attend and had a great time.
I feel like the committee should be writing them a thank you letter.
I know. That was a great, it was a great event, so, sorry for your loss, Dr. Daly.